All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Wednesday, August 27, 2025 Board of Education meeting. We apologize for the delay. There's just never enough time to talk through everything we need to get to, but we do our best. If you would, we're going to have Dr. Scanlon lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Jomano, any changes to the meeting agenda?
Yes, we have one addition. Item 10C, 3020A, hearing officer decision.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We get to do something really wonderful first. Welcome, Katie. We're so happy to have you here. Congratulations on earning your seat up at the board as our student representative. So if you wouldn't mind, we're going to have you go over to Mr. Jomano and get you sworn in. Thank you and congratulations again, Katie. We're excited for your first report next week. All right, Dr. Scanlon, we will turn it over to you for item 6A.
So we are very privileged to introduce one of our very successful students. If you didn't watch the news this morning, when your superintendent schools in the first day back for teachers and administrators, and you hear on News 12, Ward Melville High School, you cringe a little bit, but it was a very good reason. So we'd ask Dr. Kula to come up and introduce our student. Oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Halonia, you got the record, both of you.
Thank you. You got it. All right, so welcome, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to present. So as the premier high school level biology competition in the United States, the U.S. BioOlympiad provides educators with an opportunity to enrich the life science education of talented students. It supplies motivation, curricular resources, and skills training to take them beyond their classroom experience to the level of international competition. Each year, the Science Department, Dr. Kula, and leading the charge with the Science Department, supports students who dedicate themselves to the study that can propel them through testing competitions. But rarely does Ward Melville have students achieve what rising junior Eric Liu has accomplished this year. After two rounds of challenging online exams beginning last February, 20 finalists were invited to a residential training program where they learned advanced biological concepts and exacting lab skills at the United States BioOlympiad National Finals that was conducted at Harvard University. Eric initially competed against 12,000 high school students from across the nation. His outstanding scores won him an invite to the 2025 National Finals, where Eric then earned his place on the U.S. BioOlympiad team. This summer, Eric and his teammates went on to This summer, Eric and his teammates went on to represent the United States at the 2025 International Biology Olympiad in the Philippines. Their hard work and commitment was rewarded with three gold medals and one silver medal. Like the performance in any sport, success in science competitions like the BioOlympiad requires an intense level of dedication to study and practice. So this is an individual achievement, but really an achievement that stands on the shoulders of so many others. So Eric and his parents are here tonight as his first teachers and scientists themselves, you know, began that journey. And throughout the district, it has been the beneficiary of the education, you know, of our teachers, you know, beginning in kindergarten all the way up through the high school. Oftentimes, it's when students get to high school that they get this kind of national and international recognition. But we're certainly aware that that starts, that process starts a long time ago. So from the high school, we are, we're very grateful for that support, support from the board, from administration, from all of our teachers who've had a hand in Eric's education. Congratulations to Eric on this outstanding, amazing achievement. Eric, come on up. We've got a certificate for you.
Absolutely.
Come on, Dr. Kula. You go up there, too. That doesn't matter. Congratulations to you. But I also want to wish congratulations to Dr. Kula because her support for this program and her leadership has been tremendous. And you're the reason why we keep getting all these accolades with all these wonderful students. So your hard work is truly recognized.
Congratulations. We would love for you to stay, but please do not feel obligated to stay. We understand it's still a little bit of summer left, so do as you wish. If there's ice cream in your future, we understand.
Bring some back.
All right, we're going to run down to item 8A. Talk about possible bond, Mr. Carlson.
Yes, thank you. So everybody may recall, last year, we worked with a bond committee over a period of about a year. We visited all the schools. Lots of meetings, lots of discussion. And ultimately, the bond committee recommended unanimously that we proceed with a bond referendum with a whole list of projects district-wide. Came out to about $125 million. With discussion with the board back in the, I guess it was last winter, our thinking at the time was separate that into two separate propositions. We'll start with Proposition 2, which would have been all of the air conditioning pieces. We still have some of our cafeterias and gymnasiums that are not air conditioned. It would be those plus artificial turf field for the football field at Ward Melville High School would be in Proposition 2, which came out to about $15 million. Everything else, about $110 million, would be in Proposition 1. And the way those work, Proposition 2 can only pass if Proposition 1 also passes. So that's fine. So then, because of, you know, the budget, we were going through the budget. We had the issues with the health insurance. State aid was, you know, unknown at the time. The state budget was so late. So we decided, let's, let's hold off on a bond referendum for now. Let's see how the rest of the budget cycle plays out, and then we can revisit in the fall. So we're revisiting it now. So our recommendation would be to move forward with that. However, one thing we would like to, for the board to consider, not decide on tonight, but New York State now, as part of the budget process, put out a heat condition regulations. Basically, it says, to summarize it, when it gets to 88 degrees in a space, that space cannot be occupied by students. And just so you know what we were telling, it's specific in how to measure the temperature. It's not on the windowsill in the direct sun under a magnifying glass. It's center of the room, three feet off the floor in the shade. So back in June, we had some hot days. Jason Gravsky, our facilities director, went around to, it was at the end of the school year. So like, for example, the gym at Jelena's, which was not being used at the time anyway, because it was testing going on, but it was over 90 degrees. So if that were a regular school day, we would not have been able to use the gym that day. So with that new regulation, our thinking is perhaps, at least discussed, do we not have the separate proposition for the air conditioning pieces? Because it's more necessity now than it ever was. It was never a requirement that a space not be occupied. Now it is, if it gets above the 88 degrees. So again, we'd be happy to answer any questions about that now, but we're not asking for a decision on that right now. We do want to continue discussion about the bond. On September 17, I will be doing a presentation at the board meeting about the bond to review the projects that were listed in the whole scope of the referendum, the process, the, you know, the cost, the cost per homeowner, that kind of thing. I'll be doing that September 17 to refresh everyone's memory. But just something to start thinking about, whether, whether we should separate air conditioning from the rest. And if we're not going to have air conditioning as a separate proposition, then the next thing, again, not to decide on tonight, just to think about, with that separate proposition was going to be not just the air conditioning, but as I mentioned, the artificial turf football field at Ward Melville. So now, if we, if we do put air conditioning with all the rest of the projects, do we keep the turf football field outside all by itself? Have the $123 million in Proposition 1, and the $2 million turf football field is a separate proposition? Or then just make all one proposition out of it, all of it? Or if you don't like the idea of a turf football field, then that's, that's a, you know, something to be discussed as well. So again, happy to answer any questions about it now, but we're not asking for a decision on it now, just so you can start thinking about it.
Anybody have any questions for this evening on that? Sure.
Do you have a list of the spaces that violated this temperature requirement other than that one gym?
I don't know. Do we have a? No, we just wanted to check some of them. Yeah, but it was, it was, it was a week in June. It was real hot. So yeah, Jason and I were talking. We said, well, go, go measure a couple of spaces. See what, so see what they're at right now. If on a, I, I forget what the, the outside temperature was that day. But it was, it was really hot. So if it was 95 degrees and it had been, you know, it was one of those heat waves we had where it had been over 90 degrees for, you know, however many days in a row. If at that time, the temperature in the gym at Jelena's, for example, was 85 degrees, we'd say, hmm, maybe with the other air conditioning and all the classrooms on, maybe it would never get to 88, but it was, it was well above that. So, so what we're talking about is the cafeterias at the elementary schools, the gymnasiums at the elementary schools, and Jelena's at Murphy. The gym at Ward Melville is air conditioned now, and the cafeterias at the secondaries are air conditioned. We had done the, in our 2014 bond, we included air conditioning for the Ward Melville gym. That was because we used, well, we still have the prom in the, in the gym at Ward Melville. And what we used to do is, you know, you have six, 700 kids in there all night. At the end of June, it gets hot. So we would, we would rent air conditioning units for that one night, and it costs about $15,000 for that one night for the air conditioning. So when we did the math, well, since we were doing the 2014 bond anyway, our debt service over the 15 years to pay off that bond after building aid actually comes out to less than $15,000 a year to air conditioning. And it's turned out, it's great. It's just great to have. It's, it's, you know, not the luxury, you know, some of us that are, you know, older and we say, well, when I was a kid. You know, well, it's a different world now. So, so it's really nice having that gym air conditioned. So we would.
Plus the matter, the work that was done in the last bond, where we did all the unit vents in the different classrooms. We no longer have the air conditioners chutting out of the windows in all the different locations in the buildings. And it's much more fuel efficient for us overall and the amount of electric we're producing or consuming, I should say. That's a critical factor. The bigger issue is if we have to vacate those spaces, whether it's a gym or the cafeteria, where are we putting them? And that's the bigger issue. Like if we're trying to get classes into, where are they going?
Yes, I was trying to get an idea of like sort of which spaces are affected with this. It's the cafeteria and the gyms.
For the elementary schools. And then the gyms for the two middle schools.
Thank you.
First time I ever said that in public on the middle, to middle school.
And, and also, so that, that was just one day. We went and checked the temperature there. But every year, we get concerns from our building principals, especially in some of the elementary schools. The cafeterias get so hot. And there's, there's not much we can do. So it may not, might not be 88. Well, maybe it is. I don't know. Maybe it's not 88 degrees where we would not be allowed to occupy the space, but it's very uncomfortable.
We also looked at the cafeterias, particularly at like Mount and Arrowhead, because their ceilings have a high peak to them, lowering that level down and then putting some of the ductwork above in that area if we had to. That also, we're not, also going to be losing heat during the wintertime that it's going up into this vast, you know, A-frame at the top. So that's part of the mitigation with the bond itself, to try to look at those areas. Because that's, that's a concern, not just for air conditioning, but also heat in the, in the wintertime.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. All right, that takes us to 8B, our board goals, round two. I open it up to the trustees for any comments, corrections, addendums. Dr. Bach?
Sure. So I think the, I think last year, we had an item related to the change in start times, and I think that's not in the draft right now. So I think I'd want to put that back in. I know it's, you know, we had the restructuring, so I'd want to at least get, you know, updated costs and recommendations. And then my understanding of the, you know, the main reason we didn't do it last year was this huge increase in healthcare costs. So depending, you know, what it is, we could, we could consider getting that done this year.
Okay, anybody else?
Regarding IT programs, there was a lot of requests to recover the fourth grade, so hopefully we can put that in as well.
So, so if you look under budget development, that, the fourth arrow there, that's when we say return programs, that's what we were talking about.
Include, okay.
Yes.
Good.
Anyone else? Okay, I pretty much echoed what Dr. Bach said. So I just, sorry, I'm going to make the blue column a little bit hefty here, but I feel like point three, under safety and security, the, the real estate broker, should really be under budget development. And then under that, I had the same thing, you know, determine a way to institute and maintain a later secondary start time, so. Okay, that will bring us to our NISBA voting delegate. For those of you that don't know, each year, the New York State School Boards Association comes up with a list of resolutions, proposed resolutions to consider and position statements to consider, and sends it out to all of the delegations to decide amongst ourselves. And then we choose a delegate to take our opinions back as a vote. And that is done right before convention, which this year is October 17. So I believe last year, Dr. Lee, you did it correct. Would you be willing to do it again?
I need to know the date.
The, so, Mr. Mar, so it's the 17th, October 17 is the actual convention. It's usually like a couple of days before. Do we know the actual day of the virtual? Or is that the 17th? It is the 17th. So convention's two days after that. So that would be, what day of the week is that, anybody? Friday. Would that work? Thank you. Appreciate it.
So you want to vote on this on the 3rd, or you're going to make a motion to move it?
I think it's below for us to move.
Okay.
I believe. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it is, sorry.
So we'll, we'll move it shortly.
Got it.
Okay, board presentations. Dr. Scanlon.
Yes, so this year, we gave you a list of possible presentations. Some are required on the state regulations. So the first one would be next week on safety by Mr. Blown. As Mr. Carlson mentioned in his presentation, the bond would be discussed on the 17th meeting. We're going to give an update on the task force for anti-Semitism, racism, and hate speech on the October 8 meeting. Ms. Ruben Strunk will be coming to talk about the stock market lab that we've been considering moving forward with putting into the high school. Then we have a break for the 5th of November, December 10. Program update from Dr. Biscari. This is all the programs, including MTSSS and all the, all the things we've been doing this, this year and last year. The January 7, just as we were talking about transitions from Mr. Dr. Bach with the, we have the secondary principles, all four of them, will be here to talk about how the transition is going for all the secondary buildings. And then January 21, again, a requirement on the regulations. Ms. Pimentel will be back to do the data presentation. Hopefully, everything isn't unembargoed by then. And then February 4, Dr. Dubrasky will do a presentation on the projections with retirements. The February 1 deadline will help us, but this is not just for this coming year, but for future years, what we might be looking at as far as numbers. So this way, the board has an idea potentially as we move forward on how many retirements we could. Just remember that, that does not mean people have to retire. That's possible retirements.
Okay, any questions or thoughts on those? All right, thank you so much. We go to Mr. Carlson for 8E.
So there is, excuse me, there is a school tax exemption available for volunteer firefighter and ambulance workers that's been in place for about 20 years. I don't remember, recall exactly what year that started, but it's about 20 years. And it's available to homeowners after they've completed five years of volunteer service. This is authorized by New York State, and then each individual tax and authority can either choose to, to, to grant the exemption or not. And we have always granted that exemption. There, the state is now allowing that five-year minimum service period to be reduced to two years. So we had discussed this back in the springtime with the audit committee, who recommended to adopt that, lower the requirement from five years to two years. And then, which now we're bringing it to, to the full board for discussion. If the board is, is okay with this, I would put it on the next board agenda. We would have to do an official hearing on it, at which point then, a subsequent meeting, then the board could actually vote on it, if you give me direction to, to move forward. Either way, it wouldn't take effect to, as long as it's approved by the board no later than February, it would be in place for the 26, 27 school year. So this, this exemption, while I don't, I can't say exactly how much it will cost everyone else, because remember, when, when someone gets an exemption, it shifts the cost from, from some people to other people. I can't say exactly how much it would cost everyone, because I don't know how many people fall into that two to five-year thing. But I can say that it would be very few for the reason of, same here as, as every other area. There are most, most volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers start at a fairly young age, before they, long before they become homeowners. So by the time they become homeowners, they already have, most of them, they already have the five years. So lowering that to two years, it probably will not increase the number of people that get the exemption. And if so, it would just be they're getting it up by as much as three years. Right now, we have 106 people in the district that get the exemption. So what this would do, as I mentioned, would lower the requirement from five years of volunteer service to two years. And then after 20 years of, of having that, they would get it for, for life. As long as they remain there, they, that became, that remain their primary residence. It doesn't transfer with the property. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them. As I said, the audit committee's recommendation was to adopt the new two-year service requirement, so.
Any questions?
Okay, so I'll have that on for probably September 17 board meeting, for the official hearing of it, where I basically say what I just said. And then at a board meeting in October, you can vote on it. And it would be in place for the 26, 27 school year.
Thank you. All right, I'm just going to add one other thing under our items for board discussion. All right, I'm just going to add one other thing under our items for board discussion, per conversations amongst the board and our ongoing investigations of security practices. I would like to request that the administration do some further investigation into the specifics of some of the proposals about arming security, and actually put some harder dollars and cents numbers to those. Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to policy now, and I will turn it over to Mr. Mesteki.
The policy committee has met to review the, to continue the review of the four thousand series. On for tonight for first read is the homebound instruction policy, the adult education programs policy, class size policy, textbook selection and adoption policy, information center resources selection and adoption policy, computer and network policy, and graduation ceremonies policy. These policies have all been reviewed by legal counsel, and I'm available to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you. Any questions about those? Okay, thank you so much. We will move on then to our items for board action, and continue with Mr. Mesteki to discuss item ten A.
Okay. Ten A is the board's policy with regard to student health services. Again, this is a policy that's been reviewed by counsel. It's reviewed by the policy committee, recommended changes have been made, and I'm available if there are any questions.
Okay. Any questions or discussions about policy fifty-four twenty? Okay, do I see a motion to approve?
A second.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item ten B, Mr. Mono.
Okay, that's a designated place and time for the board meetings for twenty-five, twenty-six. The time is changing for the open session and executive session. Executive would be five-thirty, from five to five-thirty, we're moving it, and the open session from seven to seven-thirty.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, do I see a motion to approve that change of time? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, no opposed, no abstentions. Thank you, that carries. And we have our walk-in item ten C, thirty, twenty-eight, hearing officer, Dr. Dubrasky. Would you like to handle that? Or Mr. Mesteki?
That is the matter that was discussed today in the executive session regarding the hearing officer's decision in the employee disciplinary matter for the employee named in confidential Schedule I.
Presuming no questions, do I see a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Nope? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to take that to our consent agenda now. Do I see a motion? Second?
Sure.
Okay, I would like to move to pull item eleven Z for consideration outside of the consent agenda. Do I see a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll begin with eleven B, Ms. Mono.
They are the minutes from the organizational meeting on July first.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. And eleven C is also yours.
Eleven C is the appointment-
Your microphone, sorry.
Sorry. Is the appointment of the voting delegate for the NISBA annual business meeting that you just discussed?
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, thank you. Approval of the district-wide school emergency plan. Any questions or discussions? That's already been presented to us at past meetings. No questions, discussions? Okay. All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Carlson, beginning with E.
Item E is the establishment of a scholarship in memory of Willie White, who is a custodian, who, for more than fifty years in the district, who worked a lot with the athletics department. This passed away sadly two years ago. This, this, his family would like to establish a scholarship fund in his memory, and this request comes through Kevin Finney. That's that item. When we get to acceptance of donations, there's a first of a few donations to that scholarship fund. We'll get to that in a second. The next item, participate in cooperative bids. There are two bids. One is that Town of Babylon has a contract for landscaping materials, and the Shoreham Waiting School, Shoreham Waiting River School District has a contract for boiler service and repairs, and in provision with New York State law, we can piggyback on those contracts, and that's what that item is. The next two items, one is, are related to special ed services contract. The first is a tuition contract with an outside agency, and the other is a contract with two agencies for providing service, tutoring services to special education students. Both of those in accordance with students' IEPs. Item I is the acceptance of donations. We have several donations. The first is some office supplies donated by Ms. Deborah Giordano to Arrowhead Elementary School for students to use. Well, it's offices, sets office supplies, really classroom supplies. A drafting, professional drafting table donated by Ms. Joanne Touch. Our technology department can use that. And then, we have three, the first of three checks, three of the first checks into the Willie White Scholarship Fund. One is a check for a hundred dollars from Ms. Linda Barrett, a check for a hundred dollars from Ms. Vicki Goldfarb, and a check from twenty-five dollars from Lester and Susan Rapids. That's all to the Willie, the brand-new Willie White Scholarship Fund. Item J is declaration of surplus equipment. There's a list of Chromebooks that are all, have outlived their usefulness. All the item, serial numbers are listed. And then, we have a whole list of surplus textbooks. There's a number of them in various buildings around the district, Mount, many Arrowhead, and Jelenis. This was all due to new programs and obsolete textbooks. And that is it for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions about any of those items? All right, we'll turn it over for, beginning with L, Dr. Biscari.
Thank you. So, we have a rising tenth grader who's a Girl Scout, who is requesting to perform her gold award at Minnesotki Elementary School, and her project is inclusive of around ten posts placed throughout the backfield. And there's going to be a story that's associated with these posts, so there'll be parts of a story at each of these posts, and the students will have some sort of physical activity that they would have to perform in between the posts. So, it's, it's really making sure that, it's promoting physical activity and reading throughout the back of, of the Minnesotki Field, and she is requesting permission to move forward with that project. M is an affiliation agreement with Emerson College for clinical placements, and affiliation agreement with Mercy University, same for field placements for their students. O is an affiliation agreement with St. John's University, same. And P is our annual approval of our multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS plan, formerly known as our RTI plan, that you approve each year. Q is our professional learning plan update, formerly the professional development plan that we have to submit to the state every year. R is our impartial hearing officers. We got a revised list from New York State, requesting your approval of the new hearing officers. And S is the revised members of committees on special education for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on any of those items? All right. T, recommendations of the Committee on Special Education Subcommittee and five-oh-four Accommodation Plan meetings as dated. U, recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education meetings as dated. And beginning with V through Y, Dr. Dubrasky.
Very good. V, memorandum agreement between the Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Administrators Association. This was as a result of the elimination of an administrative position. We needed to augment and revise the titles within the TVSA contract. W, memorandum of agreement between the Three Village School District and the Administrators Association mentoring stipend. That was as a result of augment the mentoring stipends that have been, I guess, in existence for the last twenty-plus years. We kind of, we, we changed that a little to keep up with the times. X, appointment of additional school physicians. We have received additional recommendations from our chief medical officer, Dr. Sussman. He has added on a number of physicians who have all gotten fingerprinted, checked, background checked, and now ready for approval. Y, appointment of substance abuse-related service coordinator. If you recall, we do this, we do this appointment every July, but because we were in the process of finding a new candidate, we now have one, and this is a state mandate to provide. You're welcome.
Any questions about any of those items? All right, you want to do A A?
Absolutely. A A, personnel items, non-instructional. We've had several non-instructional retirements at this point. Twenty-four non-instructional resignations. Conversely, twenty-three non-instructional appointments, including food service workers, and about eighteen childcare assistants. We've had several non-instructional stipends, ten non-instructional substitute appointments, non-instructional hourly extra assignments, several appointments with our community swim, finishing up our summer rec program appointments, and non-instructional appointments to this extended school year program.
Thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, all in favor of all of the items mentioned in the consent agenda? No opposed, no abstention, consent agenda carries. Thank you so much. And we will turn it back to you, Dr. Dubrasky, for item eleven Z.
Eleven C, personnel items instructional, certainly. Now that the year has started, we now start with our instructional retirements again. We do have one teacher with a mid-year retirement, as well as two teaching assistants for mid-year retirements. We have twenty-four instructional resignations. This is the time of year that we kind of make up for a lot of things going on in the summer, and people leaving us for other assignments because they've either been with us full or part-time. You are approving one instructional leave of absence, seventeen instructional appointments, which include teachers, leave replacement teachers, part-time teachers, school nurse, school psychologist, and school social worker. Twenty-two instructional substitute appointments, including fourteen teacher subs, five TAs, and three nurse subs, several co-curricular and annual extra assignments for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and several summer work and summer program assignments, and adjusted to their assignments.
I may as well. One of the things we've been discussing with keeping the board informed, we've been keeping an eye, as we have every year, with the class sizes and the elementary levels, and we are very conscious of the fact that if things start to grow. The board had given us the ability to address class size in elementary of twenty-seven or higher. We have a couple of sections in two of our schools that are looking at around twenty-six. And while it may not necessitate having the full-time teacher in there to break it up, especially at this late juncture in the summer, and with the start of school being next Tuesday, our recommendation would be to put TAs in those settings to assist those teachers with those larger-than-class sizes than comparatively to other class sizes. Not that if you, other districts, people from other districts look at it and say, well, our class size is larger, but for us, we want to support our teachers and the students in the classroom as best as possible. Ideally, that would be making the class sizes smaller, but as we said, at this juncture, it's never works out well when you're trying to break up a class three days before we're opening. So, the TA support is something we will look to do. This is just to keep the board informed. It's not something that you need to provide approval for this evening, but it's part of the overall plan that you provided us earlier in the year. So, hopefully, this will address some of the issues. Ideally, again, going forward, as we will keep examining this, numbers increase, and we may be back here at the table discussing what other things we may need to do moving forward.
Dr. Scanlon, then, as a result, what we're going to probably use, we're going to need the next board meeting for, is to recall some of the folks we've accessed in some of these areas in terms of SEAs and monitors and teaching assistants.
Excellent, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. All right, so do, we have all in favor, this will be just all item eleven Z, all in favor of eleven Z? Any opposed? And I am one abstention. And move on now to public comments. Do we have any?
No public comments.
Okay.